I'd like to call the meeting of the City Council from March 4th to order. Mr. Plummer, would you like to lead us in pleasure?
Thank you for the privilege. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, item A is roll call.
Yes, Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Plummer.
Present.
Councilmember Sutch.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Mayor Garaventa.
Here.
City Attorney and City Administrator, President, Administrative Services Director.
Here.
Fire Chief.
Here.
Police Chief.
Here.
Community Development Director.
Here.
Everyone is here and present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item B is City Clerks' Report on Agenda Posting.
At 3:00 PM on the 28th of February, the agenda was posted for public review.
Okay. Item C is approval of approval of the agenda. Is there any additions, subtractions, distractions? Seeing none, we'll move on to D, presentations, if there are none. E is public comment on non-agenda items. The public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda that is within jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on the subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. I understand there are a couple people that want to come up and speak on non-agenda communication. That's your, that's your cue.
Is this thing on?
It's on.
My name is Earl Ranzel, and I was an officer of the Teamsters Union in the Bay Area thirty years ago, and I also had the homeless there, so it's not my first rodeo. But I've worked now for giving someone a chance. And we take the bus, give them showers and stuff like that, and then we have a trailer that pulls in beside us, and we give them clean clothes, underwear, and everything else before they take their shower and everything like that. And every time we do this, we do this twice a week. And we're at the old Sonora Hospital down there where they tore it down. Every Wednesdays and stuff like that, and Thursdays, we're at the drop-in center of the old DMV. Give someone a chance. These people there are homeless. The homeless people up there, we clean up the area. Nobody's ever helped them there to give them a garbage can or help them put the stuff there. They just threw the stuff on the floor. They were the ones that wanted to clean up the area, and they've been doing that. And we've been going there to help them with it and everything else like that. These people are very nice people. Whether you know them or not, these people are always going to be around here. They've been around, and they're doing great progress with a lot of things there, helping us out with things. But we need garbage pickup, and I'd like to see them give us street porta potties. I'd like you people to put us on the agenda to discuss this at another date. At this time, I was going to try to get Twoloming County to go with you people here to support us, to pay for these things here. But we do need porta potties out there, otherwise we're going to have a real epidemic. And Waste Management has been doing wonderful for us. They gave us four dumpsters, and we filled them. Plus, we took another load to the dumps ourselves on the trailer. And these people there are working just for a hamburger and a Pepsi we give them. That's all we got. But we need the public's help also. But we've been getting the public's help. There was one fellow that read in the paper how old I was, and he said if a guy could do that at eighty-seven, he was seventy, and he wrote us a check for $510. And the public's been trying to help out quite a bit. And I would like you people to take this into consideration, and we do need those two things. We need other things too. But we also went down there to Modesto. They got four hundred tents given to them, and they're nice tents, but they're also are under control. They're on the right step. They got security guards over around the clock. They have the police driving through there. They're taking the people out of the park and putting them in these tents and stuff. But every two feet, there's bodies. People in there are so close together, I've never seen anything so dirty, so terrible. That's the way the poor people live. But in other words, we're trying to get them out of the park and into these tents where they can clean up the park.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Ranzel.
And we do need the public's help, and I appreciate it. If you people put us on the agenda and see if we can get together on some. We're not asking for the moon, and I ain't asking you to build them top, trunk houses or otherwise. But we can do a lot together. We're doing our jobs, we're trying to help out, and keep the community and the city clean. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Do we, yeah, I think we asked a question. For public comment, can a question be asked?
From the council.
From the council, yeah.
You, you had a newspaper article that had the tents. Was that the Modesto B?
Yeah, and you're interested in it?
Please, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Earl.
I have a comment. I want a, I want the council to know that this is the fourth time that I know of that gives someone a chance, and the homeless have gone out and helped to clean out the area. This isn't the first time.
Is there anyone else like to speak on public comment?
Hi, I was just going to take a minute to tell you about, Twoloming County Arts has a program called the In Focus Competition and Exhibition, and it opens this coming weekend. It isn't to the city limits, it's out at Angelo's Hall in Columbia, but TCA is in the city limits. So anyway, it opens this weekend, Sunday is the reception, and then we'll be there for the next two weekends and the two weeks between. And it's open every day from noon until 5:30.
Where is it?
At Angelo's Hall in Columbia.
Angelo's Hall, okay.
Yeah, and we're going to have all the kids from first grade to sixth from Columbia Elementary School will be coming through as well, so it really, we really get to have a lot of people see it there, so I want to invite you guys to see it.
Cool, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
About our cleanup. We've created an incentive program to show people that our homeless people are not lazy bums, and what we're doing is, we're, we're working out the details of it as we speak now. Tim has helped us get four different dumpsters, the two-yard dumpsters, through the Waste Management. And what we're doing is a pilot program to show that the homeless people will pick up their garbage if there's a place to put it. And what CHSAC wants to do is try to promote this throughout the community so that people will help with footing the bill, because Waste Management shouldn't have to take, pay for everything. They paid for four of our dumpsters, and then one of our dumpsters, we had to hire them, and that's when that $510 donation came through. But anyway, we want to keep the community clean and sort of the homeless. They don't want to be living in a rat-infested, and I, many times I'm wondering about the fact of disease to all of us because of the rat infestation, and they can't, because there's no place to put the garbage, it's not that they want to live in garbage. The majority of them are like you and I, they don't want to live in garbage. So what we've done is we have created a program, or we're in the midst of creating a program now where they have to pay for their luxury items. When I say a luxury item, I'm talking about a sleeping bag, I'm talking about a tent, I'm talking about tarps, I'm talking about flashlights, I'm talking about propane tanks, the small ones that they can put on their little cook stove. And what we're doing is, when they come for their showers, if they bring garbage, they get a token. We don't want to litter the property where we're giving showers with, with waste. So we're giving them a token, they bring down the bag that they collected, okay? And they pay for those items that I'm talking about. It's certain, like if they want batteries, they have to bring one bag of garbage, they get a token, they bring it over, we check it on their checklist, so that they are accounting for picking up the garbage and being paid for it with this type of thing, what they, if it's three batteries, it's one bag of garbage. If it's D batteries, because they're more expensive, it's two bags of garbage. And when it's a tent, because tents are very expensive for our organization to purchase, it's twenty-four bags of garbage. So when you reach that number, they will be issued a tent. We're no longer just giving them to them, they pay for it in garbage. We want to try to keep the community clean, and we need a whole lot of people to help us to keep it clean. If they have a dumpster, that allows us then to put that garbage directly in that dumpster and have it picked up once per week. But they're more than happy to pick up garbage. They were the ones that initiated this program in the first place when we went out for the fourth time to clean up the mountain, okay? There's thirty-seven camps in Sonora. Not all of them have that much garbage, because there's not as many in the camps as there happens to be in this certain area, as we all know, on Stockton Road, okay? That's one of our biggest. We have about sixty campers there on Stockton Road, okay? And they are more than happy, they were just anxious and excited to be able to get this garbage out of their way also. It draws the firehans, it draws all sorts of critters, and it's not a healthy situation in the first place. And we're exposing them to that. Many times in my case management, I'm taking them to the hospital because of infections, not from needles, but from the fact that they have, that have to live among this garbage. The women, you, for their Kotex, use dried leaves until the shower bus came in. Now we give them feminine products, because they have vaginal infections, they have all sorts of problems going on. So that's our, that's what we're working on right now to try to eliminate and to keep our community clean, because the homeless are homeless. They're you, they're me, they're the next guy down the block. They could be your best friend and have, and have their home taken away, anything could have happened to them. We have a lot of mental illness out there, which we work with them very closely, and we get them to the proper agencies, and we also give a whole lot of counsel to them also. This month alone, I have five homeless people getting jobs. I'm negotiating cars for these people now. One of them has a two-month-old baby, but his wife can't even live with him because they are homeless. She went home into Placerville with her father because they have a small baby.
Okay, Hazel, you need to wrap it up.
Okay. Anyway, he's going to be working at JS West, he's a wonderful young man, and we're working very closely with them, and we love them all, no matter what, what, the life they came from. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before you go, before you go, a question I want to ask you. If someone wants to donate or to volunteer with you, how do they get ahold of you?
They get ahold of us through our website.
Okay, which is?
They can also call us at 588.
I'm sorry?
588.
Okay.
8377, I had to think my brain. Anyway, 8377, that's our corporate number. We're on Green Central, so it will say if you want to talk to Hazel Mitchell, dial 101, and it comes right straight to me.
Okay.
If they want to, if you're in this group and so forth, if you want to call me personally, get ahold of me on 206-8065, that's my cellphone number. I don't give that to just everybody.
You just put it on, you put it on television.
And that's okay, because I get in and dated with phone calls anyway, and there are people that need help.
And your webs, and what's, what's your website?
Our website is g sac tc.org.
Okay, G, S, A, C, T, C.
Tc, meaning Bobby Cowan.
Right.
And give someone a check, it's g sac.
I just want to make sure they get it on the TV and.
Okay.
Yeah. Did I forget? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on?
I'd just like to commend you for this. This is incredibly innovative, and it's what I hope would come out of some of our own efforts. That's wonderful, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on the public comment portion, non-agenda item, part of our agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to item F, is Consent Calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be voted on in one motion, excuse me, unless a council member or member of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. There are two items. One is approval to pay invoices on previously budgeted expenses on May 5th, 2019.
March 5th, sir.
I'm sorry, March 5th, 2019. I didn't have my cell.
The first day.
The first day, yeah, early day. And item two is approval of disbursements in the amount of $143,375.27 on March 1st, 2019, for payroll inclusive of employee salaries, employer and employee taxes, and retirement contributions, and miscellaneous voluntary employee dividends. Is there anyone, is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council, I'll see for a motion. Move the motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Plummer and second by Councilmember Williams to approve the consent calendar. I'll call for the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. Item G is unfinished business. There's one item, consideration to waive the second reading and adopt ordinance 855, amending section 17.04.284, 17.28.020, and 17.60.040, defining and allowing indoor self-storage facilities in the ML zone and by use permit in the C and CG zones. Direct call.
Thank you. Even as you say it, you pretty much explained what we're doing here. You're asking, staff is asking that you do approve, waive the second reading and adopt any ordinance related to indoor self-storage. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them during the early last meeting, so.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sutch.
So can we have an unlimited number of indoor self-storage units in the city limits?
We have unlimited.
Does this allow an unlimited number of indoor self-storage units?
It'll be one building.
No, I know, I know, but it's, so they allow in one building, or if someone finds a lot, can they build indoor self-storage?
Yes, they could, as long as they meet the requirements. So, and the zoning requirements, they can't build it in every zone, so they have to meet the requirements in the ML zone, it is used allowed by rights. And that's our industrial, light industrial zone, in our C and our CG zone, they would require a new permit.
So just to add on to that response, where it's a permitted use, there's little, there's little the city can do if they comply with all the other site plan and design review requirements. But because, but with a use permit, if there's a frequency or a concentration in an area that the council or the planning commission is concerned about, through that use permit process, that could be one of the determinations. So it can't be just, I mean, the whole purpose of a use permit is it's an appropriate use in a particular location within that zone, and if it's not, then, then the commission has a discretion to not approve it, so, so there's a distinction between permitted uses and conditional uses.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, public comment? Is there anyone like to comment on the side? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and/or motion.
Oh, that we approve, uh, claiming the.
Second reading.
Yeah, second reading and adopt ordinance number 855, amending sections 17 dot 04 dot 284, 17 dot 28 dot 020, and 17 dot 60 dot 040, defining and allowing indoor storage facilities in the ML zone and by use permit in C and CG zones. Say that ten times real fast.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Hawkins and second by Councilmember Williams to waive the second reading and adopt ordinance 855. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes 5-0. Item H is public hearings, there are none. Item I is new business. Number one is consideration to approve a special event permit application to allow the closure of School Street for the Sonora High School Every Fifteen Minutes event. Is there someone?
Yeah, I'll introduce it and invite the students up. So in your packet, you have a request for a street closure. It's to accommodate the Every Fifteen Minute event at Sonora High School at a date to be determined. We don't, as part of this process, don't want to disclose that date, because it's announced.
It's a surprise.
Right. The closure would be on, on School Street between Snell and Washington, and would be from the hours of 8:00 AM to 10:30 AM in the morning. Our recommendations include obtaining the special event permit, providing proper notices required, the required liability insurance, and placing the road closed or detour signs as directed by Public Works. And now I would like to turn it over to the student representatives to explain their project or event.
Dear Sonora City Council, my name is Branna Spring. This is Sonia Stevens. Sammy Roscoe. Caitlin Ramsey. Alyssa Bowman. And Joseph Fielding. The mentor Jackie Fox. Did you know that traffic collisions are the leading cause of death among Canadians? In fact, every fifteen minutes, someone in the United States is injured or killed in an alcohol-related incident. Sonora Union High School, in conjunction with the California Highway Patrol and Office of Traffic Safety, is taking a proactive step in educating local high school students about making mature decisions when alcohol beverages are involved. Sonora High, in cooperation with various city, county, state, and local community groups, will host a program called Every Fifteen Minutes. Pass Sonora High School on the dates that have been listed on the permit request, and cannot disclose to public at this time. Every Fifteen Minutes is a two-day program involving high schools, juniors, and seniors, which encourages them to think about personal safety when alcohol is involved. The program challenges them to make mature decisions and recognize their actions affect others besides themselves. We would like to ask for the permission to close West School Street on a predetermined date discussed, so that we may stay at our practice and have open access for only the agencies involved. The same time, setup and breakdown will take approximately two hours, from 8:20 to 8:30, or 10:30. The E15 council has arranged for personnel from agencies such as the CHP office, SHS Deputy, Sonora PD, City Fire, and City Fire to present on the scene during activity. We would greatly, we would greatly appreciate your participation in allowing for the temporary road closure to facilitate this event. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else can say anything, and you're all set? Okay. So, I appreciate you all coming out and doing this, and it's, it's a yearly event, if I am not mistaken.
Uh, five-yearly, five-yearly between us and Somerville, I believe, yeah.
Oh, okay, good, good, good. I think it's a real rip-off project. What I'm going to do now is I'm going to ask if there's anyone else in the audience who wants to speak on the side. Is there anyone else likes, is there any public comment on this, on the side?
Not public comment, but did I?
Well, sure, come on up. Semi-public.
I just wanted to thank the students and Jackie for putting this on. This will be my second year since I've been fire chief, helping out and participating in it. It's a really important program, it really does show the teens on a surprise day, they're not expecting it, what can happen if somebody does get behind a wheel after they've had a couple of drinks, and they see the somersome outcome. And it includes not just the students, but all of their friends, between freshmen all the way to senior, and the families, because they do a whole courtroom presentation. The moms and dads get that phone call that your son or daughter's been in an accident. And I'm sorry, I get a little emotional, because I had several friends pass away in high school, and so them putting this on means a lot to the community as well, so thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else like to speak from the side? So I'll bring you back to the council for any discussion and/or motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Well, there we go. It's been moved by Councilmember Williams, second by Councilmember Plummer, to approve the special permit application allowing the closure of School Street for the Every Fifteen Minutes event. Is there any further discussion by the council? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two is consideration to approve the closure of Linenburg Street between Washington and Stewart Streets for one year as a trial period to allow its use as a pedestrian corridor in the installation of non-permanent improvements. Ms. Plummer?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, you have included in your packet an outline of the proposal from Division Sonora Committee, making the request for a 12-month closure of Linenburg Street. They've indicated that the purposes would include the, as the pedestrian walkway is shown in the Vision Sonora Plan, as a gathering place, event space as it's been used in the past.
Yeah, I see.
Yes, it's on. All right, I'll get closer. And a place for public art. And then they further described the improvements that would be done in the interim, and I'll let Lori Lima describe that to you, since she's been involved with the committee in that regard. So staff is looking for direction on this request. We would monitor the closure over the next 12 months, and the council would have an opportunity to receive public input and then determine if it would be a permanent closure or, or at the end of the trial period, open the street back up. So that's the, that's the request, and we do need council action if we are going to close it beyond what we typically do for a special event. If there are special events, though, held in Linenburg Street, we'd still require that they be processed through a special event permit application, as, as we have in the past.
Because it's still city property, and there's still.
Still city property, it's got alcohol.
Still a free fair.
If there's alcohol being served, it needs to come to the council. If it's another activity, then there's time constraints and other conditions that need to be followed, so just because it's closed doesn't mean there's, you know, anything can occur there, and it'll still be that review.
So they, basically, in essence, if there's Koffel Park, there's a park, you still would need a special permit.
Sure, yes, much like Koffel Park.
With the alcohol. Exactly. Okay, any, any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open a public comment, I need to, I wanted to.
Okay. So on behalf of the Vision Sonora Design Review Committee, just wanted to give a little bit more details on this. As Tim said. Um, as Tim said, that, um, that this is in keeping with the desire for a more pedestrian-friendly downtown that was requested through the Vision Sonora Plan. And the purpose, work goal is, uh, as a pedestrian walkway, as a gathering place, as an event space, and as a place for public art. So, um, the trial phase of the enclosure, the closure would include trees and concrete security pots at either end of Linenburg Street, so that cars will know that this is no longer a street, it's pedestrian. Overhead lighting for security, bench or benches, uh, a rebar tree for vines to, to create shade. It's a useful public art project. Painting the street surface and removing unnecessary signage. And then during that one-year period, we'll also be still working on the mural design, um, hoping that we can do that, um, at the end of the year. So, um, our goals for this project, um, as we said, it would be temporary, um, things, but it's, it's a way of seeing what works and what doesn't work. See if we can successfully grow vines or trees in pots downtown to see if any problems would occur with people gathering, um, see if the public can become accustomed to the closure. Uh, all installations removable and considered experimental, so we'll see what works. Being a good neighbor, you know, talking to the people who have businesses there, we always keep reminding everybody that this isn't for any specific business, um, but there are still more businesses there, so we need to be good neighbors. And then to create a space that accomplishes those four purposes. So, we just hope that you would see to it that, you know, one-year trial is a way of, of seeing if it works. Any questions?
Any questions for Lori? I was looking at questions.
It's not quite germane enough.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Lori. Okay, uh, any other public comment?
Uh, Greg, my name's Robert Newton, and I oppose the proposed closure of Linenburg Street. Uh, specifically, it's a historic street. It's meant for vehicle traffic, and turning it into a little, uh, parkway like this, I don't think it fits in with Sonora at all. I mean, it looks, to me, it looks like an afterthought, kind of like a fake eyelash or eyebrow or something. And why don't we, uh, instead of creating some new, uh, little area like this of plants and whatnot, why don't, uh, why doesn't the city work on Coffle Park instead? And, uh, basically, that's, that's my reasoning. I mean, we have a park in Coffle, let's open that up and develop that, work on that public restroom. Uh, I mean, there's no restroom here. Uh, you had the thoughts, I mean, it's, it looks like, uh, it's not part of what Sonora is. I mean, what are you turning Sonora into, a little, uh, party town or something? I mean, I like art, I'm an artist myself, I like murals, but I use that street, I don't want to see it closed, and I hope you take that into consideration. And that's basically all I can say.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Newton?
Is a one-year trial make it more...
Oh, the one-year trial, I think that's excessive. I mean, if you're gonna close it for a year, I mean, that's, you're probably just gonna close it forever. Uh, you know, I'm not adverse to closing it for special events. I have no problem with that, but removing that street from vehicle usage permanently, uh, I just personally think that's a bad idea. I mean, I use that street, I like to cut across Washington and go the back way to Highway forty-nine or whatever, or the save mark. So, I'll come, you know, down Linburg Street, and I'll make that turn, and I'll use Linburg, use it, you know, weekly or monthly. And, uh, it's a historic street, and I'm sure Emmanuel Linburg would not appreciate you closing that. If you're familiar with Emmanuel Linburg, I tried looking him up online, I didn't have much luck, but it's named after him, I do believe. You guys know much about him?
Oh, yeah. Actually, I can give you a history on exactly why the side streets were put in. What was it for traffic? It was for fire breaks.
Oh, fire breaks.
Hmm. So, but anyway.
All right.
Any other questions for Mr. Newton?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on the side?
So, my name is John Williams, and I own Mountain Home Gifts. The business is at the corner of Linenburg and Washington Street. I've also been a resident of Tooleme County off and on for nearly sixty years. And I have to ask the question, on a project like this, how will it affect business? Now, I ask that because I think there's kind of a trend in the planning and committees not to consider how changes in downtown Sonora will affect business. No one checked with Sue's Insurance when there was a plan to change the walkways, crosswalks up there. No one checked with Stephen Zelinsky at Embers when the chance to put a park and a large sign in front. Now, for me, owning a business right next to this, I have to ask the question, how will this affect my business? Will it have a positive effect, or will it have a negative effect? I have two concerns that I feel are negative. One, closing it will create an eyesore if it isn't kept clean. Now, I know that the city maintenance staff is hardworking, but spread very, very thin. If it becomes unattractive, is that gonna affect my business right next door? Now, more importantly, my other concern is that it becomes a location, an attractive location for vaporancy or people of bad behavior. Now, again, I know that the Sonora City Police are very hardworking, but spread very, very thin. So, my concern is the customers, tourists, will feel uncomfortable being near my store if that is the case. Now, I walk Linenburg Street nearly every day to work, because again, my business is right next door. And each time I walk down it, I think, why are we closing Linenburg? We've heard some planning of why, could improve pedestrian experience. It's forty yards long. I'm skeptical that a tourist will come to Tooleme County in downtown Sonora, walk up Linenburg and back down Linenburg, and go, boy, Sonora really has a great pedestrian experience. This is a wonderful place to walk. It's quite small. I'm concerned that if it's not pedestrian experience, why close the street? To create a park, just an awfully small park, we've already determined that. Again, because I walk it every day, it's gonna be a park between a cinder block wall and a stone wall that's gonna bake anybody who wants to use the park any day over ninety ninety-five, from June till September, and it's gonna be wet any day it rains during the summer or during the winter. It doesn't seem like an attractive idea for a park. In addition, the, the most notable thing on Linenburg Street, which would be a park for people to be, is a bar. So, I'm a little bewildered by that. So, what in fact is the reason to close Linenburg Street? I can only think of one real reason, and that's a space for events. And this brings up the last concern for my business. What kind of events? We had defined this, children's birthday parties, weddings? The reality is, there's only been two people who've asked to have events in that location in the last number of years. One, a private business that served alcohol on city property and had several rock bins, and the Chamber of Commerce, who also had a craft fair and large rock bins. Now, if you ask, how does an event have a negative effect on my business? It was so loud inside my store, I couldn't hear customers talking to me at the cash register. I was completely aware that people were uncomfortable being in the store. I don't know that a ninety-decibel-plus rock bin in that tiny area is a positive experience for my customers. So, I ask, if you consider closing it, that it be reviewed in one year, how did it affect my business? How did it affect the businesses nearby? But more importantly, these events, kind of a vague description, we don't know what they are, I am never notified as a business owner directly affected by a special event. I am never notified. It affects my business, I don't know the procedures for creating a special event, filling out forms, getting insurance.
One more minute, John.
I understand that. But you would think informing the businesses. So, if anything, I'd like to do two things, to review in one year and develop a process to notify business owners who are directly affected by any special events in this event space. So, thank you for your consideration.
Sure. Any questions for Mr. Williams? No? Okay. Anyone else like to speak on the side?
I too would like to see if this, um, Linenburg Street is closed, to remember that initially, when this plan started, rather than it being more for events or, um, a specific business having their events, that there was a lot of discussion about, um, tables and chairs and it being a nice shady park in a historic region that would enable people that are walking along to go to a restaurant and bring something out, sit there with their dog or their children, and enjoy the quiet time when they can't, say, be in a restaurant because they have kids or animals. And really share the idea of if it's gonna be closed with the business community and the arts community and the special business that takes advantage of the, um, space that's there, which, you know, is their right to do that. But remember that this street belongs to everyone, and if it's going to be closed, we don't have a place in downtown Sonora that has some nice little cafe chairs that are maybe iron that look like old Sonora or, or match some of the Italian immigrant or Irish immigrants that built those stone walls that would match and look sort of rustic and subdued and, and have a place that is something that everybody can rest at rather than, and then come in and shop, too. So, it's something that, um, this needs to be a broadened, um, base so that it, it benefits everyone. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Mary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my name is Sharon Maravich, I'm on the Defending and Guarding Area Committee. I think all of John's, virtually all of John's concerns could be answered during the one-year trial period. That's why we're asking that it be a one-year trial period so that there can be an evaluation as to, is this something that really works? Or if it doesn't work, then it gets undone. So, the trial run is really your way of judging, um, how well this proposal works that is in the Vision Sonora Plan and for many, many, many years was in the city general plan. Secondly, in terms of Linenburg Street, it's my understanding from having read a little bit about it, that it actually was a, uh, tributary of Sonora Creek. And, uh, I remember the late, uh, county historian Carlo Di Peri always liked to point out that at one point, a man ran in front of the Union Democrat, the current location, holding salad shows. It was so, when you, when you're going up Washington Street, you cross two bridges, one is at Coffle Park and the other that was at Linenburg Street. For some reason, uh, perhaps, uh, the town was ruined or so on, uh, it was filled in and, uh, is no longer a tributary of Sonora Creek. The city council has an unprecedented opportunity to create a place of beauty and utility in the heart and soul of Sonora. That opportunity faced here this evening is to try a temporary closure of East Linenburg Street, uh, to see if the Vision Sonora Plan and supporters of this project, um, are correct in our belief that this small piece of our town can have a impact on the public use and enjoyment of that space. I have participated in virtually all of the Vision Sonora process, and this was always something that seemed to be ringing bells with everyone who was participating. Uh, you can call it a linear park, uh, you could, uh, call it an events venue, a pause in the busy life of downtown Sonora, an easy way to get to and from our major parking lots, or even a pocket park, but please let it happen. Your sequel review indicates there's no negative impacts are anticipated, especially relative to traffic. Some refining of the design needs to take place, and we're aware of that. But what you see in the packet is pretty much what the trial run proposes. Although the mural on the diamondback wall for which there is permission, uh, isn't shown, uh, one of the ideas we had in our committee was a series of three, four, maybe five windows, uh, and that the visitor would look at those windows and might see scenes of Sonora in, in previous years, um, perhaps the gold rush, uh, maybe the eighteen-sixties, Victorian times into the twenties, just to see how the town has changed over the years, gotten modern, updated, but still retaining the old-fashioned flavor and the beauty and the attractiveness it has as the queen of the southern lines. Please approve the temporary closure of East Linenburg Street and give our downtown street skate a beautiful and multifunctional addition. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Ms. Mary? Seen none, thank you. Anyone else like to speak on the side?
My name's Ann Leonard, and thank you for letting me address the board. Um, as a dog lover and a dog walker, what I particularly like about this idea is it's an outdoor space. If you walk your downtown, that you can sit out with your dog. You can't take your dogs into businesses, restaurants, places of, where you can get something to drink, but that would be a place where dog walkers could find a place to sit on a bench with your dog, maybe have some coffee or something to drink, so, thank you.
Thanks. Any questions? Anyone else like to speak on the side?
One more.
I think I remember one event that we had on Linenburg where they served alcohol, but they put up a chain link cage on Linenburg. Does anybody else remember that?
More than one, definitely.
Is there any restriction on something like that? It really looked horrible. And also, I do agree with John, um, the bands have no restrictions on the type of music played or how loud, and, um, I live up on June Street and could hear a word. So, it may be that just the, uh, the two, um, solid rock walls on either side create a, basically a sound situation, but if there could be some restrictions on exactly what they put up and how they play, that would be great.
Okay. Any questions? Excuse me. I'm not sure if I can do it again.
What's that one?
Uh, no, I've got one here. Uh, anyone else like to speak on the side? Ruben?
Union Council, my name's Ruben Chonsai, and I just wanted to speak in favor of this temporary closure also. I think it's a, uh, it's an opportunity to look at a new use for a underutilized space within the city. I think that encouraging, uh, probably some business opportunities, some community opportunity, and, uh, tourism opportunity, I think is, is something that the, uh, city is gonna need to embrace further in the future, and, uh, this is a good opportunity to, to try something new. Thank you.
Any questions for Ruben? Anyone else like to speak on the side? Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring it back to the council.
Okay, just, just for the record, there was a, um, an email that was sent to all of the council members, copy left here, um, from Jan Hazen, who was in support of, of the, uh, trial period closure. Sided a number of reasons for the support, safer place for pedestrians, beautification, gathering place, um, for art night, a place to showcase history, places for visitors, locker-friendly downtown, and other ways to... friendly downtown, and other ways to, there are other ways to get autos to Stewart Street. So she was expressing support for the proposal.
Okay.
I guess I've got a couple of questions and/or concerns. It's going to be a one year, one year closure if it's approved. What's the process of looking back at it? We're going to wait a full year? Will we come back to it in 10 months? That way if it's not working out, it gives us the ability to be able to pull everything out so it's open back up in a year? How would that work out?
So council, if council receives sufficient complaints, they could request to have it back on the agenda for discussion prior to the end of the one year and then make a decision at that point. The, I was at a meeting when Mr. Williams was there with the design committee. He shared the same concerns there that he shared here. It's an indication that we need to maybe rethink a little bit our special event permits.
I was going to ask that.
That's the first, you know, through his comments, we've learned of concerns about noise, particularly if it's during the hours that his business is open and then tonight, noise in general. And obviously there's concerns about vagrancy and there's concerns about littering. Those are issues that we as a city and the organization, Vision Store Committee is an organization that's making this request, it's going to need to take care of down there or there will be a problem. So, but I think through the special event permit process, we can address a lot of the, I guess my time's up. The, through our special event process, we can address a lot of those concerns we've raised tonight with regard to noise and how it may or may not affect the surrounding businesses.
You brought up a concern about notification. Do we normally notify adjoining property owners when we have such events?
Of those, of those permits, or no, I should say differently, of the streets that we have authority from the council to close, we just use a special event permit process and there is not a notification, standard notification. But given the concerns that have been expressed, particularly at this location, I think we need to, we need to do that outreach.
I'm inclined to agree with that.
Yeah, I'd just like to speak to John's concern. I completely agree with you going in your business. You have a very peaceful business. I really have to give you a big compliment there, very peaceful. So I would be, I'd be very frustrated too. The rock music's never bothered me, but I grew up in the grunge rock era, so it's a whole different, whole different thing. But yeah, I really would like to see the permit process revisited just because I don't want any business downtown negatively affected. So, but that may be separate from this. So, one last thing, I guess, we have trash cans and/or recycling bins inside this area.
Certainly provide those as part of what's installed.
Important to do so. Mark, did you have any?
I think Mr. Williams had some, some very important concerns. We might want to, as a council, poll some of the businesses for four years, six months out or eight months out to see if it has been, I'll probably hear from John personally if in fact there is a notable change. But we're hoping that this will be, at least I'm hoping that we will see this as better for business and not worse. That for me would be a killer at the end of a year. But further along the line or the segue of this being for encouraging foot traffic and walking through Sonora, we probably should be making a stronger argument for improving our sidewalks, making them safer, smoother, et cetera, if we want our argument for this to be taken seriously. So I'm personally going to support it, but I think we need to be consistent across the board there, recognizing that it's hard to get money for it from now on, not naively.
Tim, do we have evacuation plans for catastrophic fires in this city? Or evacuation routes?
The city's emergency plans do not specifically identify evacuation routes intentionally.
Intentionally?
Intentionally. So the theory or the concept is if you define a particular route and it doesn't suit the incident, then you've got people going in a direction that they shouldn't. The plans identify the travel routes, but they don't designate them as use, as a route to use in all cases, so.
I have a, I mean, I'm certainly, I'm for a one year trial. I have some concerns in case of catastrophic fire, however, that we not, that we be able to open this road quickly so that if it's the appropriate route that people are, that we're not restricting out of town. So even after a year, I think we need to be able to open up this street and not limit, and not limit our evacuations. I think we live in a different era these days. I also would just like to remind the committee to please not overdecorate this. And that's a lot of the criticism of it is it gets a little too decorated. So I would like to remind you not to overdecorate here. That's it.
We'll see. They'll be given a chance and either we get it right the first time or a lot of projects will probably meet a lot of resistance.
I would, I would suggest that when we get started, that we review it in six months because it's going to take a little bit of time to make anything happen. I would also suggest to the committee that we relook at the possibility of tables and chairs instead of the tree, the metal tree. We need to put trash and recycle cans there. We need to put probably a doggy bag receptacle there. The whole project will be done in phases because we don't have a lot of money yet for anything. We have a little bit, about $1,750 to get started. So if anybody out there would like to help us, contact City Hall. I think a one year trial period will determine whether or not this should be done permanently. That's it.
And comments I would make are I'm glad that, that the one year closure trial period was, was thought of as a way to take a look at this because if it would have gone straight to permanent closure, I would not support that. I think by having the one year closure, we can iron out some of the problems that may or may not arise. And I think John, Mr. Williams has talked about something that I fear may happen there. And the only real way we're going to find that out is if we do the trial period. I'd hate to see it be permanently done and then, and then cost so much money to do it permanently and then find out that we have issues. And those, and by doing it this way, we find out whether those issues will arise or won't The only, there's two things that I noticed here. One was painting the street surface. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what, what the plans are for that and what, what the ideas for that, but it seems to me that painting a surface like that, one, is a little more permanent than, than what we're talking about. But also it would be some sort of safety issue, we could slip on it or whatever. And so if, you know, we'd have to, I'd have to wonder what's about that. The other thing is I've sat in the, during the summer for the art market and it is hot. And it's not even with direct sunlight, it's hot. I don't know if some sort of shading apparatus could be temporarily put up to kind of test that out, to find out if we can have a sun there with, with, under the temporary guidance to see if there's at least a portion of it, to see if that changes anything. But I think that's something that should be looked into. Anyway.
You'll be asking the fans to pull the hot air out.
And misters.
And misters, exactly.
So as I said, this will be done in phases and we have talked about shading and for the, for the future, once we get the money to do it.
Okay, any other discussion?
The committee actually brought in a solar specialist to see where you needed to put shade, a shading structure. It'd actually be pretty good.
Okay. Looking for more discussion or a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion to approve the closure of Leinbergh Street between Washington and Stewart Streets for one year as a trial period to allow its use as a pedestrian corridor in the installation of non-permanent improvements.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. I'd like Councilman Williams and second by Mayor Roxanne Hopkins to go ahead with the one year closure test of Leinbergh Street. Any further discussion? Mr. Williams?
Connie, you had wanted to have a review after six months, I believe.
After six months.
Did you want to include that in your, in your motion?
Yes, six months after we get the street closed.
A review by staff or an agenda item to discuss it?
An agenda item because I want to hear from the community.
Okay, is the secondor agreed with that?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure everything's, okay, so it's the second with the amendment. Any further discussion? Call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? CNN passes five zero. Okay, item, the second item number two, as it appears. Looked for three. I just, I just looked at some of that.
Got to get better help.
Yeah. Is consideration to approve resolution number 03-04-2019-8, imposing a 15% tax on gross receipts for any cannabis related businesses, business operating without a development agreement. Mr. Miller or Mr. Williams?
And Mayor, council, what we have before you is a follow-up to measure in, which is passed overwhelmingly by the city, to authorize the city council to set a tax rate on marijuana related business operations within the city at an amount up to 15%. As we discussed, the Bureau of Cannabis Control, I should say, before that, the city went through a very extensive process, committee process to figure out what was appropriate in terms of business operations for rural businesses in the city of Sonora. And the product of that was to allow certain businesses to operate and one business is currently operating under a development agreement, conditional use permit in the city of Sonora. Subsequently, the Bureau of Cannabis Control has come out with a regulation which really serves more as an interpretation that anyone with a license from a local jurisdiction and the state, in the state of California, can deliver anywhere in the state of California, be it recreational or marijuana irrespective of the local laws and rules, in spite of the fact that the express language of Proposition 64 says that to make local control over cannabis operations would be maintained and specifically says that certain types of operations can be prohibited by the city. Within the city, recreational cannabis delivery is disallowed as well as medical. And the only thing that we allow in terms of the retail facing type operation is medical cannabis dispensaries, one of which has been approved and one of which is going through the process. So with that, and it's somewhat in response to the Bureau of Cannabis Control regulations and also as a way to give us some civil remedies against folks who would come in and illegally basically deliver here, we asked, a staff recommendation that you set the effective tax rate for those who are not approved by the city at 15%. So the ones that are operating would be governed by their development agreements, unconditional use permits, and everybody else that came in here under the Bureau of Cannabis Control regulations would be subject to this 15% tax. I will say that this is probably the first of many different ordinances that we'll bring to you kind of governing this, presumably during, until such time as we prevail and we came along, the kind of ridiculous interpretation is rolled back. But this is probably the first of one and one of them we're reporting, we'll give us some civil remedies because those who get caught delivering and not paying the tax could be guilty of some tax evasion or another. With that, can I ask any questions, the chairman?
Any questions?
I have two. Other cities, are they up to 15% as well?
With the exception of all the cities that we represent, of those who have voted, which is about half of them, so we represent, as in West Beach today, but not, and of those who have taken, that they've all gone to 15%, with the exception of Riverbank, who set their maximum rate at 10% when it went to the voters instead of 15 on a compassionate access issue. So, but everybody has maxed out what was allowed and approved by the voters. In our, in the cities that we represent.
My, my other question is, how exactly are we going to be able to enforce this? Do we have a mechanism to know who might be coming this way? Or is it somebody telling us someone's delivering?
I think it's a combination. I think that if our diligent police come up and find somebody is delivering in the black market or quasi legal market, meaning that they're licensed in another jurisdiction but not in Sonora, then if those folks, you know, we'll be able to audit them and figure out whether or not they're legal or not and whether or not they've been paying taxes as they're supposed to. And if they're failure to pay taxes would be one of the things that can be presented to the Bureau of Cannabis Control that would effectively force their hand in terms of revoking their state license. So in other words, it gives us a mechanism to have a hammer for compliance. I think the hope is that those who are coming in through the legal system will, for fear of losing their license or getting caught, will come in and voluntarily comply. Practically speaking, I think that that compliance will be low and what I really think that you're going to have is a whole bunch of people in the black market. What the state has really created is a system where people in the black market will carry counterfeit documents which will effectively make them look like they're legal and make it very difficult to prove otherwise in the moment when you pull somebody over. But it gives us, it gives us civil and additional civil and criminal tools. So we hope for compliance. Practically speaking, I don't expect it, but it gives us more tools to work with in the event that we find people doing things that they shouldn't do. It's an unsatisfying, it's created an unsatisfying situation.
I know, I'm upset about that as well, so.
We're just going to win. It'd be the, that would be the best outcome.
Yes.
It's a day that we're hopefully get to come back here and celebrate since y'all effectively broke the story and made it go viral, so.
Exactly. Actually, there's a ally. Who's not either. Connie, anything else?
No, I guess the last thing would be... No, I guess the last thing would be, have we found anybody, have we stopped anybody that has been delivering in the city of Sonora? And I guess our police chief could probably, probably answer that question.
I don't know. No one to my knowledge and there's no enforcement mechanism yet.
To my knowledge, we have not come into contact with anybody making such deliveries recently, anyway.
And, and this will be helpful in case we do?
In case we do, and another enforcement option would be, we could set up stains, resources provided, but yes.
I would say that that's one of our recommendations that we work with law enforcement after this mechanism goes in, is to set up stains to figure out, to eradicate some of the things. The Bureau of Cannabis Control did release today kind of like its second round of enforcement mechanisms of people who are effectively misreverent, people who are illegally selling cannabis pretending to be state licensed.
Counselor, I'm probably overly optimistic here, but my reading of this, my fine reading of this is that we get to charge them 15% of their gross. So, I'm afraid to ask the question, but is that of their gross that they sell in this county or if they are a multi-billion dollar business down in Southern California? I'd really like 15% of that gross.
Unfortunately, though, it only means that we can only charge it basically at the point of sale, so the, the value of that transaction that happens in, in here. What you'll see subsequently is significant civil penalties in addition to the lost taxes as to, for those who don't comply and don't pay taxes.
So we will have other mechanisms to put real teeth in it in addition to the risk of losing their licenses, et cetera?
Correct. I think the biggest threat for the folks who are legally, for those who are actually legally licensed and are just trying to take advantage of this really poor Bureau of Cannabis Control regulation while it still exists, they have, most of them have spent a significant amount of money obtaining that license. And so, there is reason to be optimistic that those people will come in and pay whatever the local tax rate is, for fear that cities like Sonora, who haven't allowed recreational marijuana as an example, will turn them into the state and the state will then be forced to knock out their licenses. In my opinion, the Bureau of Cannabis Control regulations really come from basically a $700 million shortfall in what they projected in terms of taxes that would be earned off of cannabis businesses. So how do you make your projections correct? You force it to be a statewide program as opposed to doing that. But you can't just change the law on something that's been a ballot measure put before the city. You actually have to implement what people voted on. I know it's a not law. Got to give them a thank you.
Okay, any more questions for staff before we go to public comment?
One more. But the 15% is on recreational?
It's on everything. It's on everything. It's on everything. It's taxable. Some medical is not taxable, but excise versus sales tax are different, so.
Okay, see, no more questions for staff? I'd like to open a public discussion. Anyone have public comment on this side?
I just had a comment. I'm not a user, I don't have a point in the game. Does, at 15%, does that have a legitimate business opportunity for somebody that's got their main business in a low-tax county? In other words, are we encouraging people to come here by charging the 15%?
No, we would be at the upper, we would be at the upper end of what's being charged in terms of taxes. It doesn't mean in cannabis that you couldn't make that profitable. It just means that you, but you could actually, once you factor in the local taxes here, once you have to pay the state and stuff like that, it becomes much less attractive as an option.
But still, still, it'd be a little business-wise.
Worth more than gold on a mouse, okay.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone else has public comment on this?
I have a similar question about that. I don't know what.
We'll take the microphone.
I haven't really been following all of the process at all you've been going through with cannabis, but I used to be a practicing, my mother is 84 years old and she had, has had severe inflammatory pain for, I'd say, five years. We've tried everything and she is finally on CBD oil that does not have the THC, so there's no psychotropic effects. But she is, it's been a miracle that she has no pain and it's life-changing for our entire family. So, just being a business owner, knowing all the taxes and all the use and permits and everything you have to go through, that can't, you know, marijuana being a plant product, it's, I see it as an agricultural commodity that has medicinal properties, that this is a positive thing. And if it's going to inhibit the ability for senior citizens, which we have many in this county, and it's been found to be especially effective in inflammatory pain of many types of senior citizens, that we don't want to make it less available. But it sounds like it won't be as long as we have our normal dispensary that can still operate.
Right, the local dispensary would not be subject to the tax.
Okay.
Prop 64, is it? Prop 64 promised, well, maybe you could better off kind of explain exactly. Prop 64 promised that, that there'd be local control over delivery and other things, but delivery. And what the state's done through the Bureau of Cannabis Control is, is to kind of do a blanket, allow it for everyone. And so, what this 15% tax for those who didn't go through the process locally is kind of a counter action to what was done for our local.
Okay, so it protects the dispensary from competition.
It would be protecting the local, yeah, yeah. Kind of, it's kind of a, not exactly, what's the best term for it? It's counterintuitive to normal business practice, but it's because it's protecting...
More like an equalization to...
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, okay. Anyone else want to speak on the side? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council for discussion and our motion.
So again, it's staff's recommendation that council approved a 15% gross receipts.
Any discussion?
Yes. My, it may not, Marion's question to us is that, my perspective is that for the legitimate businesses that we have, that have gone through the many and expensive hoops that we have put up, that we, we have a duty to try and protect them. And that that's where the, our interest lies in this question. So, I support it because I want to, want to protect the people who have, the locals who have struggled to open a very nice business and apparently another one on the way. So, that's it.
So is that a motion, Eddie? Those are my...
I, that's just discussion at this point.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
I was just going to say the workshop that we had, that we met for a long time, and we worked really, really, really hard. And it's just frustrating that, because the Bureau of Cannabis Control is not even elected, correct?
Correct.
So we have an unelected body undermining our democracy. And it's frustrating because we had, had people operating inside the city of Sonora that have played by the rules, done everything they're supposed to, and then in one foul swoop. So, obviously, this is not a be-all and-all, but I, I have to support it because, again, I think it helps the people that have played by the rules and do the right thing continues to help them do the right thing.
Any discussion on this end?
I, I, I just thought of one more thing. If someone gets picked up for this, because all we're doing is just putting a 15% tax on the sale, are there other avenues that if a person is caught doing this several times, that they will get additional incarceration or nothing?
No, it's not a criminal offense. There will be other civil penalties that we'll bring back to you.
So we get to adopt, because this was passed by the voters, we can adopt this by resolution. But the other stuff we're going to have to bring back is going to have to be noticed and has to go through the ordinance process, two, two hearings, 30 days before implementation. So this is kind of what we could do quick, kind of in response to what's going on. But we'll bring something back that has lots of nice penalties. You know, looking back to make sure that, that folks would be dissuaded from not making the right decision.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
On that note, if it would be appropriate, I would like to move to, to approve resolution 03-04-2019-A imposing a 15% tax on gross receipts for any cannabis-related business operating without a development agreement.
Say a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's moved by Councilmember Plummer, it's seconded by Mayor Roxanne Hawkins to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? See none, call for the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, item number four is consideration to accept the fiscal year 2018, 19, second quarter budget report for the six-month period ending December 31st, 2018. Administration Services Director, Mr. Dukowski.
So this is just a review of the mid-year budget through December 31st, 2018. Just as a highlight, the budgets are on track. Expenditures for the general fund are 40%, so they're all on budget. Revenues, sales tax was at 42%, within range of prior years. TOT as well was within range of prior years, very close in fact to what we've seen in prior years. The department has done a really good job sticking to budgets. It's been a very clean budget, very easy for me as a new finance person here. They've done a great job not pushing the boundaries with budgets, so budgets are doing just fine. The only real thing is the budget adjustments on page 12. There were three separate ones. One was to budget for cannabis revenue that we had not budgeted for at the beginning of the year. And so that, to finish through June 2019, it's recommended that we do a revenue budget of $55,000 per cannabis. The other adjustment was to rental income. We do have a building that's empty and we're not generating rent from it, so that will be short this year of $50,000. And so the net difference is at $5,000, so there's no effect to the total budget. And so we recommend that we put the $5,000 additional into the medical insurance premiums. The second half of the year, there was a 12% increase. This is going to help cover that. There is some slack in the expenditure budget going forward, so we hope to be able to cover most of that. But we would bring any additional adjustments in the third, of course.
That's it? Okay, any questions for staff?
So I understand there's interest in our vacant building?
There's interest in our, so...
To rent our vacant building?
It is rented, based on the direction from the closed session.
Okay, and the, was that taken in consideration for the budget adjustments?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
I actually have a question on page 13. Intergovernmental, sorry, projected is 162%. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, you are.
I'm just curious, what, what's, how did that happen? I looked up and I go...
I'm trying to think. There was a one-time transaction. Some of that was the worker comp reimbursement that we get for a employee down on workers comp. So some of that isn't there, and maybe the most of that reason why it's up like now.
Thanks.
I had another question. It's more, I guess, for education in the budget per se, but when we have Orchard and those other big stores empty, is there a modification of the property tax so that we get less, or does the owner still have to keep paying the property tax as if rented?
Property tax isn't dependent on, it's on, it's on building and land value. But when they're empty, they, they potentially affect sales tax. But when there's other businesses of a like nature, we find that a lot of that, those purchases are redistributed to the other businesses. Not, not necessarily in 100% or in all cases, but that's, that's more typically what happens.
And then further, lining up the TCEDA, how much is that going to hurt us?
That's, that's, we'll, that's not, that's not part of this report. But when we have a better idea of what those costs are, we will be adding that to your agenda for discussion.
Thank you very much. I had one question.
I do have a question on OD checks, though.
No, I was like, saying thank you.
Oh, okay. Question on page 16, Measure I for the fire. And I'm not sure if you could answer this, maybe it's Amy's, but I noticed that the, over the, the trend over the four years for second quarter expenditures are trending up and kind of is, to me, a little significant way. 135, 196, 217, and 250, $100,000. I just wondered what, what, what's causing that? Oh, I see, 18, 19, same as 250.
Just from my experience, I mean, maybe Amy has a better answer, but there was crime in open positions and I think now we've had multiple positions filled.
Okay.
Most of that is we had the Safer Grant that's paying for that third engineer's position. And so now that we have the Safer Grant, the Measure I is paying for part-time employees to fill that third position right now. So that's the increase. Safer Grant is open right now and closes March 22nd, but I'm not going to...
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Just a comment. On page seven, TOT tax. I know we've had fires and we've had droughts. Hopefully this year we won't have a drought and maybe we won't have fires. But when we get to talking about economic development for the city, I want to make sure that we incorporate tourism into that conversation. Because we've been pretty flat on TOT tax.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I'll open up for public, did you have something? Oh, okay, I thought you turned it off. And any public comment on this side? See none, I will bring it back to the council for discussion and go recommend, motion.
Bring the office staff.
Was that a motion?
I don't want to interrupt anybody, except everyone's, you know. So I move we accept the fiscal year 2018, 19, second quarter budget report for the six-month period ending December 31st, 2018.
Including the staff recommended adjustments?
Yes.
Okay, so moved and seconded to accept the second quarter fiscal budget report. Is there any further discussion? If not, a call for the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. IMJ is monthly reports, there are none. Item K, Division Sonora Committee Report, there is none. Item L is communications, there are none. Item M is council member department head reports, and I guess we'll start in the back with Mr. Gorski. Did you walk all the way back up there?
No, I'm further.
Okay, Chief New?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, Chief Madaway?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Director Kellon? Ah, I take her.
Sorry, I'll take this short. I wanted to remind everybody that we did have the Dragoon Run on February 24th. It was nice, it didn't rain, they lucked out. There was about 100 runners, it was, it turned out really nice, so, and that was done by a new group, they are a nonprofit, and they are the Dragoon Run nonprofit, and that's what they form so that they can keep doing that event. Also, the Business Expo is this Thursday at the Opera Hall, from 5:30 to 8:00. It's a group effort of several different organizations, including the city of Sonora. We've been doing this for several years now, this is our sixth year actually that we'll be doing it. Topic this year is is your business at risk, and we have Officer Ashley Brandow and our police chief will be there, and they'll be talking about preventing business theft, and then we have another gentleman that'll be talking about all the new employment laws that are on the books that businesses will have to follow. It is free to any business, they don't even have to be in Palm County, lots of times we'll have people come up from the valley for these events, out of Oakdale, or from Calabars County, but it is available to all the businesses, so hopefully people take advantage of it. We moved it to the Dean this year, like, we're hoping that maybe we have a better attendance, if we were, didn't meet, so we are gonna try that this year, so I have some flyers here, if you guys want to grab one, you are welcome to, and then the other thing is we have baseline crew out at the trail right now, they're doing a bunch of clearing along the gulch, on the banks, behind the houses, on the city's property, the part that's our property, and kind of mucking out some of the dead and dying stuff that's occurred. They'll be working there this week and next week, so I just want to let you know that we are, we do have baseline work.
I didn't catch the hours for the Business Expo.
It is from 5:30 to 8 o'clock on Thursday evening at the Sonora Opera Hall.
And free admission?
Free admission.
Okay, thank you. Okay, esteemed city attorney.
Dr. Black?
Esteemed city manager.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, councilmember Oates?
Okay, on the 20th, I attended the Irwin meeting. The 21st, I attended the Visors Bureau Marketing meeting. We also had an Energy Action Plan Working Group meeting here at City Hall. On the 25th and 26th, I was involved in ATCA interviews for the executive director's position. We interviewed nine people. We have four that we will be interviewing the, on Friday of this week again. The 28th, the Access Twilight Board Meeting took place. On the 4th, which is today, the Twilight Chamber GAC meeting took place, and I would like to ask that, that we bring back, that we, the council, agendize our special events permit and determine how we really need to handle special events in Sonora. And I would also like to have us agendize something to do with the porta poms, because the, our creeks are being inundated, I don't know that we can even afford to do anything, but maybe through conversations, we can get some service clubs that would participate. So the word needs to get out and see if we can find some help somewhere, but I have no idea what the cost could be, but I think it's something that, that we need to, that we need to...
Councilmember Sutch?
On the 20th, I also went to the Twilight Counting Stan Irma Committee. 21st, I attended Central Sierra Economic Development Council, and went to an interesting meeting with the Sierra Business Council at Seven Sisters that evening. That's good work being done by that group.
An interesting meeting?
Yeah, it was very interesting, in a good way. On the 26th, I attended the Fire State Council meeting, and then just this last Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I was up in Butte County, and I met with the director of the Department of Emergency Services about their fire plans, and also worked in a warehouse organizing donated goods, goods that people donated for the campfire. Interesting, and I have information, if anyone's interested in doing that, I can connect you with the right person. That's it.
Your pro, Tim Hawkins?
I have nothing, stay dry.
Councilmember Turner?
I'll be brief, but I would like to very much commend Hazel Mitchell and the formulation that their group has been working out. They're dealing with the problems caused and not fixing homelessness, which I think is far more approachable, and I think that they're doing something really creative, and it sounds like effective, and at least we want to give them all the moral support we can, and we'll probably bring up some of those other issues at the appropriate times. Thank you.
Okay, since last meeting, I, we had the Parking Traffic Commission meeting, but unfortunately we didn't get a quorum, so we couldn't actually meet, so that's, those items we put off until the next, until March 20th. Attended the, well, of course, attended the EDA board meeting that everyone knows about by now, if they didn't, yeah. Attended the Visors Bureau Marketing meeting, also on Thursday the 21st, and also went to the Energy Plan meeting, which was very informative, and have now back in the loop for that, and so be attending that in the future. Attended the Cableator or Access Twilight Board meeting on the 28th, the Government Affairs Council Commission meeting for the county chamber this morning, and I think I'm leaving something out, but I don't remember what it was, and that's it. There's no further business, I will adjourn the meeting.